Good evening, everyone. It's 6:02. I'm going to call to order the committee of the whole for May 2nd, 2019. Can we have a roll call, please?
Mrs. Meyerino Scheibling. Mr. Fleck.
Here.
Mr. Troy.
Here.
Mrs. Melendi.
Yeah.
Mr. Guagliano.
Here.
Mr. Gentry.
Okay, we do have a quorum. With that, let's have Mrs. Foyou come up and introduce our people for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Okay. Good evening. We've got some awesome second graders from the Cape'n to lead the pledge. Well, I'll let them introduce themselves, then we'll lead the pledge. Sound good? All right, Kyle, come on.
I am Kyle Wolf.
I am Elizabeth Wolverton.
I am Ryland.
I'm Michael Ginter.
I am Aubrey.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We can have you guys come up and take over the meeting for a little bit.
There you go.
And parents feel free to come up and take all the pictures you want, so. Well, hi, everyone. How are you?
Good.
Good. Okay. Sometimes we have you come up, and I'll ask you questions, and you guys give answers. But I, we're going to do something a little different for this one, okay? Because your teachers nominated you to be here to help lead us in the pledge, and thank you for leading us in the pledge. And I'm going to let everybody here know why you were nominated, okay? So let's start with, oh, Elizabeth Wolverton. Raise your hand. There you are. Okay. For the record, I know Elizabeth, so. Okay. Your teacher is Mrs. Hop, right?
Yes.
Okay, and this is what Mrs. Hop said. "Elizabeth is respectful and responsible all the time. Elizabeth is prepared for her school day and treats students and staff with respect." So thank you for doing that. Appreciate it. Okay. Michael Ginter. Hi, Michael. Okay, your teacher is?
Ms. Hoppy.
Ms. Hoppy? Okay, and this is what Mrs. Hoppy said. "Michael is a respectful and responsible student. He is always one of the first students to help out and is always kind to others. He's a leader and sets a positive example in our classroom." So thank you. All right, where's Ryland? Hi, Ryland. I can barely see you there. Okay, and your teacher is Mrs. Dubek? Okay. Mrs. Dubek says, "Ryland always comes to school ready to learn and gives 100% effort in class. She's quick to offer help to students and teachers as needed. She's a great friend, treating everyone with kindness and respect. Thank you, Ryland, for just being you." That's awesome. All right. If my math is right, you must be Aubrey. Okay. And who's your teacher?
Mrs. Suarez.
You have Mrs. Suarez and Mrs. Gabbert nominated you, okay? "Aubrey is a leader in her class. She leads with kindness and looks out for others. She is conscientious, fun, and inquisitive. It is a joy to have her in my music class. Aubrey has a positive attitude in class every day, and she's committed to her learning and being the best she can be. Aubrey shows empathy towards others in the class and is always one to motivate others around her. She takes responsibilities very seriously and is able to handle and learn from her mistakes. She brings a positive energy to the classroom, and it wouldn't be the same without her in it." Thank you. And then, so that's Kyle, right? Okay, and Mrs. Hop is your teacher? And this is what Mrs. Hop said. "Kyle has exemplary character. He shows respect to all in his class. He looks out for those struggling and is always helpful." Thank you, Kyle. Okay. You guys stay right there. We're going to sneak up behind you, and then we're going to have all your parents come up and take all the pictures they want, okay?
Does he sit on your knees, honey? Can you see this friend, or should she get on her heels? Boy, it's a short person show.
All right. Great job, guys!
Great work, guys.
Good job.
See you later. All right. Next item on the agenda, I'm going to turn it over to Mr. Zaire for some staff recognition.
Good evening. Huntley 158 has a tradition of recognizing staff members when they have reached specific milestones. Across the district, we recognize those who achieved tenure, five years, 10 years, 15, 20, 25, 30, 35, 40. We even get up to 40 years. So we'll be doing that this evening for some of these milestones. We'll be recognizing the tenure teachers and anyone who's reached a milestone up to 20 years and more. The cabinet members, starting on Monday, will be traveling to every building to recognize those others that were in the 5, 10, and 15-year range, and you have a list of all of those in your board packet if you would like to review that. So first, we're going to start with our teachers who are achieving tenure this year. The teachers who are achieving tenure have successfully completed their fourth year in Huntley School District 158. So we're going to start with Diana Beckman. Next teacher for tenure is Alyssa Cassier. Next is Amy Knight. Next is Mallory Cundy. Molly Panier. Catherine Vandy. And James Ragoe. Okay, those are our tenure teachers for this year. Next, we're going to move on to those teachers and staff members who have reached their 20th year in Huntley 158. Now, the first person up was very excited, wanted to know what was on the menu tonight, called Mrs. Stock and had to have a list of all the items. So Chris Danner. Well, we'll show you what everyone's getting here in just a second. So next up is Jennifer Heinrich for 20 years. For 20 years, Brad Gallagher. For 20 years, Annette Langridge. Somehow I will get blamed for that. Yeah, that's all right. I'll take that. I'll take that. Next for 20 years is Jeanette Perot. For 20 years, Julie McGoughlin. For 20 years, Beverly Smith. For 20 years, Erin Stary. They receive a 20-year pin, and also, very nice silver belt here. So our last 20-year recipient this evening is Brenda Rossi. Moving on to our 25-years. Through 25-years, Phyllis Bushy. Also 25-years, Christine Henderson. And we'll do a double check here. Also 25-years, Darlene Path. Darlene, did you make it this evening? Oh, just wanted to make sure there. It's falling apart, guys. All right. We want to show everyone what the 25-year? I might have. All right. I'm going to show everyone what the 25-year award is. A pin, a certificate, and then, these are heavy-duty, so a red apple for their desk. So it's engraved with their name and 25 years of service, so a very nice gift that comes out of the office. Tonight, we have two retirements that we're going to recognize. The first retirement that we're going to recognize is Sue Lee. Mr. Kevin Wolf is going to say a few words about Sue.
Come on up here. Can't speak to you right here. So Sue, I just wanted to take a few minutes to say thank you and congratulate you for 26 years of service to students who have special needs. Not many people have dedicated their careers, and that's a wonderful accomplishment, I think. We really appreciate the last three years you've chosen to spend those here with us in District 158, supporting students from the moment they walk in and the ECC Building, and initiating the family's first journey through special education to this year now the experience at the other end of the spectrum, working with our high school kids as they get ready to transition on to post-secondary. So again, thank you for all that work and all the dedication you've provided since you've been here for three years, helping families and teams meet students' needs. We really appreciate it. I wish you the best as you move forward in this next step in your life journey, and hope you can enjoy many more hours with your husband, Ryan, instead of writing MBC reports. So I wish you the best, and again, thank you very much for all your service here.
Not only celebrating 20 years in the district tonight, she was already up here once, but now celebrating her retirement is Brenda Rossi. Mr. Marcus Bealan is going to come up and say a few words about Brenda.
Hey, good evening. Brenda told me that she did not want to be put on the spot to speak, so Brenda hit the mic and enjoyed it. I had a few notes, but Brenda, in the year that I was able to be graced with her presence and her baking good, or her baked goods, which, by the way, Adam Dean, if you're in the room, she still gets a proxy card so she can drop those baked goods off. Brenda has provided our athletic department and other areas of our building with so much life and energy. We are really going to miss her. And just sitting in, I go down, I ventured down there to stop to make sure that she's still there and didn't head for the hills just yet. But Brenda works very, very, very hard for our athletic department, and if you know how many athletes we have and how many teams and different levels and so forth, I mean, I don't know how she does the job, but she does it with grace. She never complains. She never puts up a fight against anything, and that shows the dedication that she has to the athletic department and to our students. And so we just appreciate the work that you've done for the district. We're sad to see you not be in that office, but we know that you'll be around again bringing us some wonderful, wonderful goods. So thanks, Brenda.
We have two more to recognize. Next teacher up, finishing his 30th year with Huntley 158, Mr. Steve Styers. And celebrating 40 years with Huntley 158, Mr. Wayne Blake. So that concludes our award recognition tonight. At this time, everyone who was recognized for an award, we'd like to ask you to come up here, and Mr. Armstrong is going to organize you into a great picture with the Board of Education.
Okay, and thanks to all the staff.
Okay, and thanks to all the staff for their dedication and their years of service.
Next item is public comment. Do we have any public comment?
I see none.
Okay, and we'll move on from that. Before we get on to revision and adoption of the agenda, I do want to take a moment. The community, really our neighboring community in Crystal Lake, dealt with just an awful tragedy and loss of a young child, A.J. Friend, and I know it's impacted a lot of us in the area. I just want to take a moment of silence to remember A.J., to think about what we're really here for with protecting our children and what we need to do to make that better so that no child ever has to deal with that. So just have a moment of silence, please. All right. Item five is revision and adoption of the agenda. Looks like we do have plenty of things on curriculum and finance, human resources, community engagement, building and grounds, legislation. Are there any items that we are going to be pulling off of the agenda or revising? Okay. If there being none, then I will make a motion to approve the agenda as written. Second from Ms. Valendi, this is a voice vote, so all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, motion carries. Turn it over to, well, Mr. Garen is not here, and Mr. Chentry is not here, so Mr. Troy, you're the lucky guy, and since we don't have a quorum for the committee, all these items will have to move forward for the regular meeting, but go ahead.
So committee of one tonight. Item six dot one, Huntley High School materials for new courses.
All right, so this is that time of year that we bring forward materials for new courses that have been approved by the board. So this course was previously approved by the board for implementation in the 1920 school year, and actually, oftentimes, this is a pretty long list. This is actually a really short list. I am happy to say that a lot of our courses are becoming a little bit more performance-based, so you're going to see fewer and fewer textbooks coming through. This is one. We have our dual credit accounting one course, so we're shifting accounting one to dual credit, and this is the text that goes along with it. So this will be on display for 30 days per school code, and as usual, it's the members of the public can come to the district office to request access if they wish. With that, I'll take any questions.
I'm just curious, if there's a laptop or some kind of a device that's provided where people can scroll through electronically?
Yep, they can log on and scroll through. We can walk them through it, yep.
Okay. Any questions from the board? All right, as Mr. Flex said, we'll move that forward to the general board meeting for approval. All right, six dot two, overnight field trips, overnight trips rather.
Yep, this is also that time of year that we bring as a report only, so these don't need to be approved by the board, but to let the board know what overnight trips, student trips, that we anticipate coming forward for next year. This is as complete of a list as we can make it. What we know is that sometimes some of our sports teams will progress through contests, end up in finals, things like that, that would require travel, but this is as complete as we can make it. It doesn't change terribly much from year to year, but we do try to reflect all student experiences. So again, it's just for information only, and with that, I will take any questions.
I don't have any, but I'm the lone committee member, so. Any questions from the board overall?
Need anybody to go to Iceland with you, Mr. E? Okay.
All right, moving on ahead then, six dot three, CTE review at the high school.
Okay, and I'll introduce this one, and as I'm introducing, I'm going to have Mr. Johnson and Mr. Whedoff come up to the microphone. I'll be tossing it to them in just a moment. So we are very, very excited because our high school's career in technical education, so CTE department, has completed a review. The board received a little preview of this last year as we talked about business incubator because we felt a great degree of urgency to get that opportunity up and running, and so this report is a comprehensive view of what's emerged from that CTE review. Just a real quick comment that I think is so exciting is that when we really look at what our students need after they graduate high school, we speak to employers, we look at where out in the trades, out in the fields, out in industry, we see need for employment. That really has driven this along with student interest. So Mr. Whedoff and Mr. Johnson have worked extremely hard to build out some pathways, some courses, and really look to give our students more opportunities in this area. So with that, I am going to toss that over to Mr. Johnson and Mr. Whedoff.
Good evening. We try to survey our classes and figure out a direction for each of them if we didn't see one already. We focus that, just like Mr. Slicker said, in career pathways, trying to figure out what certifications we could reasonably get our students in four years, two years, whatever we can get them for, and prepare them for industry. So that's been the overarching goal here for what we're heading into. We've got curriculum maps here for a multitude of classes. We've aligned that to best practices as we could find them in the industry, and then where we could not find them, we reached out and talked to as many community members as we could. We've talked to trade unions, and we've tried to bring the community as a whole to get a better idea of where we needed to be. We wanted to ensure all classes were clearly connected to college and for readiness. We're trying to, again, focus these classes and make sure when kids leave our doors, they are either ready for school or they are employable to the best of our ability. Our classes, we tried to build in assessments. We spent a lot of time this year going over assessments and figuring out what that looks like for us. Previously, everything had been a Scantron test of some sorts, and we felt that that wasn't a good measure of what we've done in class. So much of our class is authentic and it's hands-on, performance-based, that our assessment needed to match that. So we've come a long way to derive that and better figure out exactly what we're trying to measure and how to do so in that manner. We've also tried to build in some of those assessments throughout the class to get different kinds of measures. For an example, with our woods classes, we previously built tables and end tables and benches. Now we're trying to bring in small business mentality, and they're going to try to create projects, not try, they will, sorry, for someone specific to fit a need, fit a budget, to try to make this as real-world applicable as possible. And I think that's an element that wasn't previously in that class, but will be going forward. We've had kids that have gone into doing fine woodworking and producing things out of their garage, and we felt that they lacked that initial business sense, so we would like to try to bring in some of the expertise of the business department and try to better find pathways for these kids. They don't always realize the interconnectedness of everything that goes on in high school and how that can apply to them. So that's been a huge focus for us. As I said, trying to broaden students' access to CTE pathways, making sure they're aware of these classes, the sequence of classes, and trying to better get the word out there. We found that a lot of our students think that classes are standalone and don't see that interconnectedness or to realize that there is a series of classes that they'd have access to, and the behoove of them to start those earlier if they can, just so that they have an opportunity to get to that capstone class, which is another thing that we're building in. We brought to you the incubator class, which is going to be that capstone for the business class, and we are very excited about that opportunity, and we've got a few others here that would be mentioned. We've gone through and worked on our personal finance class. We've got that updated to new state standards. We've, why would you say it's the right word there, Mr. Johnson?
So as far as our personal finance class goes, what we've actually done is we took the state of Illinois standards, the national business education standards, and kind of did a gap analysis. We combined both sets of standards to make sure that we were covering both state and national standards, and we've really updated the class so that when our students leave, they can be physically responsible. We've moved away, we have a rule, if you can Google it, it doesn't belong on a test, and we've truly moved to performance-based assessments so kids can show what they know when they leave.
Thank you. The eligibility states that one. I appreciate that. It's a good pairing. Incubator and accounting will both be dual credit. The incubator is something that just kind of happened in the last 36, 48 hours. That one's pretty new. Our instructor has a business degree and has 2,000 hours of industry experience, and MCC has us paired up with a course there, so we're moving on. So that, we're pretty excited about the opportunities in business. That'll bring us out to three classes in business departments that all offer dual credit. And then we've looked into some other technology options where we may be combining some of our other courses to be able to offer an additional class as well. So a lot of good opportunities are coming out of that. Things that we look for for the future, potentially an international business class that could go in with the Global Studies Academy, as well as a second year to incubator, which is called accelerator. The focus of that class is on students actually running their business should they get funded past incubator. So if they have a product that is deemed worthy and someone gives them money to actually start that company, this would give them the time to actually run that, to get manufacturing, center of mass producing this should they need to, finding their shipping venues and how they're going to get products from A to B and to package it, and all of the other logistics that were worked out previously, but now this is rubber hitting the road and they're actually doing this. They're calling Walmart, seeing if they can get items on a shelf. They are, it's the next step. Then past that, project management certification, as well as different technology certifications to help them get immediately placed into the workplace beyond that initial entry-level sales position. So that's our, primarily our updates in business. And as you can see here, for next full year, we will be replacing our current accounting class with our dual credit option. It is not necessarily a new course, just a modified course to better fit MCC standards. And I'd say better fit loosely, we met those standards and we've had that curriculum. Now we just know that it dovetails well there, and the teacher's actually helping rewrite MCC's class in conjunction with our own class, so it worked out pretty well. And then this is incubator. And then past that, this would be the additional capstone option of adding an accelerator in two years. And then beyond that, project management certification. Family consumer science, again, performance-based is a key here. Rather than taking a multiple choice assessment on how well you can cook, let's actually try to figure out exactly the skills we want you to leave this class for, and then have you physically do those skills where we can assess that. I think that's kind of looking like more of a cooking competition kind of exam, where students would not necessarily be told what ingredients they have to use, would be able to put something together out of what they're provided in short term and come up with a recipe and prepare it. So the real-world skills plus the traditional skills of your culinary profession. Four courses are being replaced with dual credit classes. Our culinary courses, we are getting those paired with MCC as well, so those will become dovetailed with MCC. We've also found out that we can get our fashion class certified through Harper. MCC doesn't currently have a fashion program, Harper does, so they've allowed us to extend out further to a bigger school so that we can bring that in. Mrs. Pyon is also going to be in the process of reviewing her credentials and her portfolio. They've temporarily accepted that. She just needs to go through and take a course there, but we should be in good shape for that as well. And then we'd like to introduce an education pathway. Seems like we should perpetuate our own profession, and we have a lot of kids that want to get involved in that, and that would be coursework, preparing students to be in the classroom and figuring out developmentally where students should be, and then at the conclusion of that, the capstone there would be to actually place those students into elementary schools, middle schools, wherever they would like to teach and get them a micro teaching kind of an experience where they would lead a lesson and then come back and do some observations in the classroom, but that's kind of what we see happening there. So for next year, culinary arts will be replacing what was foods two. Year after, we will have world of fashion dual credit with Harper. We'd like to introduce teaching pre-internship, and then culinary arts two will be dual credit, and that will replace foods nutritional two. Year after, we would like to have dual credit with our fashion two level class and to bring in, to bring in the teaching internship. Engineering pathway, here we just kind of want to fine-tune our connections and find different ways to get our kids out of the building and into communities, and getting more internship opportunities, more job observations, but the coursework we found was really solid with the project underway curriculum that we have. So there aren't any major modifications to that. The only course we'd potentially like to put in here that we will hopefully present next fall would be a robotics class. Manna Hank has been here multiple times with accolades that her students have gotten in extracurriculars, and there's a huge interest there. We're looking at like 64 students in an after-school activity, and there's a big interest in that, so we'd like to build on that. So we don't have any changes there. Computer science, we're looking to add a networking and computer repair course in 2021. We've got connections with Cisco that we found, and they're willing to give us content for that. We just need to figure out the best way to deliver that to kids right now. And then the year after, cybersecurity, and then really great opportunity here for a capstone class would be to have a student on help desk where we could potentially alleviate some of the tasks our techs feel in the building now, and get kids into that. And with the other coursework there, we could potentially have them certified, be able to get into entry-level positions within the district to do networking. Our first change here would be in 2021 with computer networking, and then the following year with cybersecurity. And the year after that, student on help desk. Polytech, again, we went through that exact same process, trying to best figure out how to assess our students and to get those assessments to be hands-on. I've spoken through that already. And we've also found that we have a lot of kids that want to get into the trades, and the trades that are coming to our career fairs are really trying to get kids into them. Like a lot of our students are really surprised that entry-level masons can make $60,000 in a year, and they're starting to open their eyes a little bit. Now that we've got geometry and construction a year under our belts, students are really excited about this, and we're able to better show them the things that we've been able to do. We're currently working on a baseball dugout at the high school, and we're doing CMU block walls for that, and they're getting to try their hand at that. We built a shed on the track field. The rain's kind of holding us back there, but she goes are ready to go any moment here, so with any luck, that'll be tomorrow. So they've got to experience pouring concrete and finishing it. They've built wood framing. We have sided things. They will paint. They have done look. We've laid block. They've done some steelwork with the rebar. So they've got to experience a lot of different trades, and they've kind of gotten a little taste of it. So what we'd like to do is to roll in an additional course where we could do more block time and be modules, and we could do a quarter on drywall, we could do a quarter on plumbing, we could do a quarter on electricity, and then maybe HVAC. What we'd really like to do is to kind of make that a career preparation, where if we could get relations with the unions to be able to come in and to help us better understand what exactly their proficiency tests are to be accepted into a union trade school, so that we could make sure our kids leaving our classes could take that test, not be afraid to get in there and do that, and to pass it, and then to get into school. So our kids wouldn't be coming out being able to get right into the union, but we've given them all the tools to be able to take that test and to get the training through the union halls if they need to. So ideally, that's where we're going to go there. We've also brought in welding into one of our manufacturing classes, and we're excited about that opportunity. That is the biggest demand in our county, and every time we've gone to a trade show or manufacturing conference at MCC, everyone is looking to hire a welder. And that's, that would be a great paying job for our kids that they could get right into. MCC's got some nice little certification programs with very limited coursework, and they could be employable right away. 1920, we're not looking to change anything. Year after, we would like to be able to do construction trades, and the year after, we would like to be able to build into those specialty courses. So it's kind of a year-by-year start altogether for what we're doing.
So just to kind of sum everything up, if you look here, we have a total of eighteen pathways built out. Um, last month, we went through social studies. We talked about three courses, five electives. Nick has forty-four courses in his department. Um, so this was a much more robust and complex review than a more traditional coursework review. We're very excited about some of these opportunities. The project management certification, we dream big. If we were actually able to pull that off, we would be the first school in the nation to have it. Um, there are several things that we're dreaming very big with. The Cisco Academy, to bring in Cisco endorsements is another game changer. It's something that no other school in the area is currently doing. Um, these are all, um, experiences that we're extremely excited about. We think just organizing things like this to show students the connection between their classrooms, what is available to them. Um, that in and of itself is important. And I think that we have a pathway forward for the future where we can easily plug and play. We can move on to different pathways as technology updates. And, um, I'd like to personally thank Nick. He has done a tremendous amount of work to get this done. Um, there's been a lot of community building. Um, Nick has written several grants. One that he submitted yesterday was thirty pages long.
Thank you, Mr. Armstrong, for calling that.
And Mr. Altmeier for the financial work. Um, so we're very excited, um, for this opportunity and move forward, um, with this review. Pending any questions, that kind of wraps up our presentation.
I, I just have a quick demographic question, um, I guess is what it would be. In the trades education piece, how many female, do you have any females taking any of those classes?
It's funny that you should mention that because not only in the trains but trades, but also in our engineering classes, you can definitely see that there's a schism. Um, something that we talked about is there's, um, girls without code. There's, um, gems with the, just girls in engineering's math and science. There's various organizations that we're trying to work with to fix that, but you're absolutely correct.
I'm, I'm talking about like the welding and, and that pathway.
I think we have five in construction right now.
Five.
So it's small. But those girls know exactly what they're doing and, and do a phenomenal job out there. We just need to do a better job of reaching out and bringing more of it.
Right, because I mean, like you said, not, not everybody's going to take the college path. And especially if you're a female, I mean, other than very other specific female, you know, driven career paths, I'd like to see some more girls go into the construction area.
And you know, the, the advice that we've gotten is, and when we get into the middle school exploratory, is that almost by the time the students get to high school, a lot of them, they think that they've made up their mind that we really need to even push this back and start discussing this at a much younger age.
I agree. Love that tie also.
I don't know if you can tell from there, it's actually made of wood.
No way.
Do any of your students make that? Let's talk about the tie.
We want to, so three of us sign up to take the class through Rocker this summer. We better figure out how to do that and get used to the kiddos. So next year, our plan is to start making those class. We don't currently, so sadly, I watch this one. I really like it, but I, I would like to say I made that. So June eighth, that Sunday, I am making one, so.
All right. Perfect, love it.
It's coming.
That'd be a great capstone class for woodworking, so. Yeah, this, this is very comprehensive. I'm blown away by everything you have out here and that's available. I don't think any student at Huntley is going to feel like they're not, not going to have opportunities that are made for them. And I, I, I'm very excited about what you guys are going to be doing over the next few years.
Yeah, I mean, there was, there was a word comprehensive. I mean, it's almost actually frightening, I think. Um, with the amount of work you had to do to get it to this level, um, and I, I've just, I have a little bit of concerns about, is it too much offerings? What, what, do you expect to have enough kids in all these pathways?
We've, we've seen a lot of growth in the classes that we've already changed. School district has allowed us to put some really great equipment in the students' hands and that, that's bringing more students to us. We've made some great changes in our woods program. Next year, that, that classroom is being used fifteen out of sixteen of the periods in a year. There's only one more section we can potentially grow in space that we have and then we've got to start making some different decisions somewhere. But if, if, if our numbers are building.
Put that into perspective, a few years ago, we were running sections of, of CAD three and construct, and, uh, construction management with twelve, thirteen kids just to get them going. So to have fifteen of sixteen sections is, is tremendous. Where there were, there were days, there were periods where the shop would be empty four or five years ago. And now that's, it's not happening. It's a, you know, kudos to Mr. Reedoff and Lee's Bill.
And I, I think something else to keep in mind that any of those courses that you see there, those would still come with normal course proposals where, where we'd have enrollment. This is our giant pie in the sky plan. It's not, it's not to mean that we won't be a year off and that some of these classes, we won't be able to run due to enrollment. Um, all of these courses will still go through the normal course proposal process.
Yeah, no, I appreciate you thinking big. And it's, it's, it's a great, great map of a tremendous amount of pathways. I mean, it's, it's, I mean, I'm, I'm, I'm trying to think through the community colleges and thinking whether they even have this depth of coverage on all these topics. It's, uh, it's something else. So I just really appreciate the effort and put into that.
Piggybacking on what, uh, Ms. Melendi said also, I, I would definitely want to encourage, uh, breaking the gender stereotypes in all of us. Uh, and maybe being proactive in it too, because, uh, I think you're seeing already that, uh, that gender does not matter in being able to be successful in any of these. But we are, we are all kind of stuck with these preconceived notions of who should be in this field or who should be in that field and that's just not the case anymore. And it shouldn't have been the case, so I, I'm glad that you guys are, uh, doing that.
All right, so that'll move to the regular board meeting for approval. Thank you again. Six dot four, middle school exploratory review.
And Mr. Johnson should not have sat down so quickly.
Yeah.
Um, so if we begin with the end in mind, thinking about, um, in the context of that high school CTE review of what we're building out, looking at what we want our graduates to be and how we want them to be able to achieve after high school, we had, this was actually a little bit of, um, just sort of luck, I guess, in terms of timing. Um, but our middle school exploratory program, which is our elective or special program in the middle school, um, was being reviewed at the same time as high school CTE. We took a little liberty with our map to make that happen because we felt that that was real important. We didn't want those things to happen at different times. So when we look at our middle school exploratory curriculum, we really focused on what is it going to take to get robust experiences for our middle school students aligned to twenty-first century skills uh, and really bring our middle school exploratory program forward with that same innovation that the high school CTE program is going to be coming forward with. Um, so with that, I'm going to send this over to Mr. Johnson again and you'll get to hear him talk about kind of how this is going to flow through all of our levels.
All right, I'm back. Um, if you get bored with me, Ms. Vitucci's been a part of this ride the entire way, so. Um, so the purpose of our presentation tonight is obviously to go through our middle, middle school exploratory program. Um, we're going to discuss both, both curricular and programmatic changes, as well as then with the recommendation for the Board of Education to approve our updated curriculum maps. Um, so you're going to see a lot of similarities to the high school CTE review. Uh, we began by aligning our curriculum to standards as well as best practices. We also wanted to ensure, ensure that everything that we're doing aligns in some way to those pathways you just saw at the high school. Um, we also focused our, um, we, we also focused our courses on cross-curricular activities, which I think you'll see as we go through the presentation. Um, and then as far as changing our actual programs, uh, we wanted to broaden the experiences available to students. Um, at the beginning of this, students had seven choices in their exploratory programs. Um, by the end of this, they should have twelve. So we're, we're getting close to doubling the amount of experiences available to our students. Um, we want to increase kindergarten through twelfth grade articulation, which I think we can agree we'll all see specifically as an example of project lead the way. We'll see kindergarten through twelfth grade. Um, and then finally, we want to increase collaboration between the middle schools, which, um, we'll not only do by working together, but also we'll have much more similar experiences available between the two middle schools. Um, tonight, while we go through this, we'll focus on three major areas. Um, they'll kind of go from least complex to most complex, uh, as far as the work went. Um, we'll start with culinary arts, then we'll cover our art classes and we'll end with our tech, technology courses. So, um, our culinary arts classes, the changes that are going to happen for next school year, um, there will be an increased focus on ethnic cuisine. As an example, in sixth grade, um, while students are studying Greece in social studies class, um, they'll have a unit on, um, Greek cuisine in their culinary arts classes. Um, there will be an increase, um, on measurements and conversions, which is obviously a connection to math. I didn't want to include it on the slide because we're not there yet. We're trying to add a small chemistry component to all three levels as well. Um, and also there will be an increased, um, emphasis on recipe reading. With, trust me, for a sixth grader to be able to read a recipe to do all the conversions, um, to do it all accurately, it is very impressive. It's, it's very challenging and kind of connects all those skills together as one. Um, an increased, um, emphasis on safety and sanitation. Uh, that's something that the high school worked with us on. Um, our, all of our culinary arts courses at the high school end with the certis safe, safety and sanitation certification, which is, um, the leading certification in the restaurant industry. And it's something that we wanted to get the students used to in middle school. And finally, we're going to add some student choice. We can do that in a variety of ways, simply by, um, giving the students a little bit of leverage, letting them pick their own spices, um, differentiation with recipes, but also, um, by letting them bring in their own cultural heritage. Um, what celebrations do they have at home? What cuisine do they have at home? There may be some community connections there as well that we can incorporate. And next is art. With Ms. Vitucci and I have spent a lot of time together working on. Um, curricular changes for next year. So currently, we have a sixth, seventh and eighth grade art survey class. Um, we're going to focus those more on, um, the skills of elements and designs such as, um, perspective, shading, um, pattern, so on and so forth. Um, and right now, kind of where we are in the process, our next step is to develop skill-based rubrics. And then the year after, rather than just having sixth grade art, seventh grade art, eighth grade art, we'll have four quarter-long art courses, um, which are listed there, drawing and painting, ceramics, sculpture and graphic arts. Those directly tie into the experiences that students have available to them at the high school. Um, we worked hand in hand, sixth through twelfth grade with our, um, counterparts at the high school. Um, and this is something that personally, I'm very excited to see how it plays out, um, in the year twenty twenty. And then finally, um, our technology courses. Um, we had, um, two technology classes, applied technology and computer applications. We'll be replacing those two classes with four modules of project lead the way. Um, design and modeling, which gives students kind of the bird's eye view of engineering. Computer science, which is one of our fastest growing job opportunities. Automation and robotics, which directly leads to what we just discussed with applied technology. And finally, medical detectors, which directly connects to our medical academy. Just to clarify, there was a little bit of confusion that these were like mini academies at the middle school. These are not. These are choices available to every student that allows them to truly explore and engage in various activities. And Ms. Melendi, to answer your question earlier, this is really where we, we can see in sixth grade, where we can get students interested in robotics and hopefully we can start to see that gap close more and more. All right. Um, a quick review, our goals when we started out were align our curriculum to best practices, um, to make sure that we had clear connection to all of our high school courses, increased cross-curricular connections, which we've discussed. And then we had larger programmatic priorities, which were to broaden student, uh, voice and choice, which we believe we did by, um, moving the amount of choices available from seven to twelve, um, as well as increased collaboration and articulation. And, um, our only recommendation is at the next board meeting to approve our curriculum maps, which are a penalty in your board packet. Pending any questions, that is the end of my presentation. All right, thank you.
All right, we'll move that to the general board meeting for approval. Item six dot five, e-learning days. Dr. Schlichter.
Yeah, so this is a, so more of a discussion and just sort of a, an information item that, that we've really been discussing a lot internally in the district. And just a, a quick recap, and it's in the attachment, uh, in your board packet, some background information. We've been experiencing just a little bit of, of whiplash related to, um, legislation around what defines a school day at the state level. So for years, as you know, uh, we have been leaders in pushing back against the concept that sitting in a classroom for five hours means that you're learning, right? We've got blended classes at the high school. We're constantly trying to break down the barriers of school day. So we were ecstatic when we learned that we could potentially be redefining school days. Um, the legislation has sort of shifted back and forth a little bit due to some different factors. And, um, some of the opportunities that came with that idea of not necessarily defining a school day as five hours in a classroom were to put in place the opportunity for schools to use e-learning days or remote learning days to replace emergency days. Initially, um, the entire package of legislation also included, um, the fact that they would perhaps not allow us to count parent-teacher conference days as student attendance days. Districts were looking at using those remote learning days to replace that. Um, where we've landed from a state perspective is essentially that we, we currently, and, and this is, some of it's still up for approval, but we believe that, that it will become law or revert back, is that we will end up with, um, our school day being defined as a five-hour clock day. Um, we will be allowed to count parent-teacher conference days as student attendance days. Um, so all of the sort of discussion and, um, you know, hoopla that happened at that time about, oh, are we going to add days to the end of the year or should those be remote? That discussion's a little bit off the table right now because we are able to count those days, um, as student attendance days. But what we're left with is the potential to use remote learning days, uh, to replace disaster days or snow days. Um, as you know, schools, some school districts around us have tried that already. There have been also several districts across Illinois that have done a little bit more of a robust pilot. And as you see in the memo and, and we've had a lot of discussion, uh, internally, as an innovative leader in Illinois and, and really becoming nationwide for advocating for a new definition of a school day, breaking down the walls of the school day, this is something that in philosophy, we really believe in. We have, we've jumped on it. It seemed like a great idea. We should be a leader in this. As we started to move forward, really working with our, our special education department, working with our buildings and, and also getting feedback from parents, um, what we started to realize is it's a little bit more complex than that, than something that we might want to just jump right into. So I'll just lay out a little bit of the complexity and then Dr. Rowe, jump in if you want to and we can have any sort of discussion. So the first level of complexity is that this is a, a pre-K twelve district. And so if we are going to use remote learning for a five-year-olds or even four-year-olds or three-year-olds, we need to give some serious thought to what that means for families. Um, is it possible to email something to parents? Yes, it is. Does every single student that we have in this district have a parent available during the day who can work through a robust learning opportunity with them? They do not. We have parents that work second shift. We have parents that might have their students in childcare. And so we would be sending work that counts for student attendance. In other words, if you don't do this work, you're absent, um, which is a, a pretty harsh penalty and could put our families under some stress. So that was one variable we looked at. Another variable that we looked at that we thought was very, very important, and to be honest, none of the pilot districts across the state had a great answer. And the state right now says, we have no guidance for you, but we understand the problem, is our, our special education students, our students with special needs. They are entitled through their individualized education plan to receive minutes, to receive services and to receive support. And we want to make sure that we don't take a step that we're not prepared to put that appropriate support in place. We need to make sure that this works for all of our students if we're going to do it. And I think the last piece really just has to do with our philosophy of remote learning. So we want to do something, we want to do something good. We want to do something that is rigorous, that furthers learning. We have lots of ideas, um, as to how that could happen. We don't want to put packets online and call it a school day. That's just not something we're willing to do. And we just came up against this logistical question of if we make a five AM call to, to cancel school, what could that possibly look like? what could that possibly look like that teachers for a pre-K through 12th grade classroom could put in place quickly to make that happen in a way that parents can really assist their kids to learn? So we started sort of going down that rabbit hole, and every little string that we pulled brought up more complexities. And if we keep as our sort of North Star, we are an innovative district, and we philosophically believe in this concept. And we are committed to rigor in serving all of our students appropriately and with the highest level of service. That is where we landed and said, you know, we need to take a cautious and prudent approach to this because we want to do it, but we want to do it well. So where many districts or some districts may be coming forward, or you heard some already have done it, to try to put this in place. And I do think that they did a great thing, trying to take a risk or trying to move forward. We want to make sure that we are doing it right. And so this discussion is really designed to kind of put some of those variables in front of us as a team here with the board, and just have some discussion, get some viewpoints in order for us to move forward. Now, our tentative plan right now is that we're not abandoning this idea, but that we would like to study it further with our staff, with our experts, with our student support personnel, and our administrators really be able to do it right. So we wouldn't be doing anything quickly, but we would be continuing the conversation. So tentative approach, but with those variables, we wanted to bring it for discussion.
I'll just do two cents that I'll add, and I would welcome any feedback from the board. To echo everything that Erica said is spot on. I did some, I did some research with some of our, my colleagues across the state who are our comparable districts. And not a single one was going to go out and get out in front of this other than District 300. And I commend District 300 for doing what they did and trying something. But the districts that we hold ourselves to are in the exact same boat, which was a huge relief for me because I felt we should have had this figured out. And the fact that we were struggling with producing something of our level of quality and rigor that would give me the comfort to sign off on, I can confidently count that as a school day versus having our students make up and be with our teachers for an extra day. And I'm not, just not there yet. As Erica said, we're very interested in continuing this discussion. And we're actually interested in putting together a larger task force or committee with teachers from all levels and administrators in the buildings and central office to discuss this in greater detail. And I just think this may be one of those situations where it's more, it's smarter for us to go slow in order to go fast and not jump out with both feet this time. But I welcome any questions or comments or discussion.
I kind of think the challenge is the result of the success the districts have in personalized learning and all these other innovative programs. The more you do that, the more it's going to be very difficult to have a meaningful e-learning day that fits everybody's needs. I always think about when we were, when we were kids and the teacher wasn't having a great day, we somehow got to watch a movie.
Film strip.
Yeah, yeah, film strip. Well, you're apparently a little older than I am, sir. No, we had film strips too. But, but I get it. You know, I think that's, that's going to be a real challenge. And your analogy of pulling on the strings, we keep pulling on strings, that's, I could see where that's going to happen. I don't have anything to say about it, other than I recognize the issue.
I mean, think about, you're trying to go through this big plan to account for two, three days a year. I mean, I don't, I just don't think it's worth doing, to be honest with you. I think, you know, you think about it a little bit, at the end of the day, it's not going to be as good as a real, let's call it a real school day. And I don't think for the one or two or three days a year that this occurs, that you, you know, you never know when they're going to happen. How does it sequence with what they're being provided in various classrooms through all these levels? I don't see how it works, to be honest with you. So I don't know that I'd spend a lot of time really thinking about it, to be honest with you.
Yeah, I agree. As a parent, I initially loved the idea of the e-learning day because we always know what day school's going to end. You know, it's kind of nice not to have to worry about, you know, making those days up. But with, I have grave concerns about the special ed hours that we want to make sure that we are not shortchanging those, that sector of students that need the services. And what about, you know, also, if it's a snow day, what if, what if our internet is out because the snow is so heavy, or the sleeting rain, or whatever? So now, the plans that we had in place for the e-learning, the emailed curriculum, now we can't even do that. So we're right back where we started. Also, you know, there's nothing wrong with having a snow day as a kid. I mean, we all had them. They were some of the best memories, you know? Get out and go sledding. These kids are inside so much. Go sledding, you know, maybe a mental health type of day. So I think we're just, it's just not, it's not going to be the quality that our students are used to. So I think we should, should continue to explore, but cautiously.
I think going back to all students always becomes very challenging to serve. As other board members have said, to provide that level of consistency for all students. And that's where my trepidation lies. We heard tonight some of the changes that are being proposed in curriculum for classes that are more hands-on rather than bookwork, if you will. I think that becomes a challenge for those students as well, to find meaningful work. And maybe I'm wrong, but finding that meaningful work for a class that is more hands-on becomes very hard to put that kind of a curriculum in front of somebody for one day or two days. And I think the one-day, the one-off days aren't such a big deal. It's, it becomes more of a challenge, but it also becomes more of an outlier, where you have multiple days in a row, where you have a weather event that is a two- or a three-day event. Whereas you have a one-off day, it's probably not as big a deal. So I kind of side with everybody else for the same reasons.
It's interesting because when we've spoken to our parent advisory groups and staff, especially at the secondary level, at first it seems kind of like a no-brainer. Oh, middle school, high school. But as you start, every group we've spoken with, we, even if the group starts enthusiastic, you kind of start thinking about all these pieces. So that same journey that this conversation kind of took, you go, oh, wow, not so sure about that, and what about this? And so it sounds like we're all in agreement and understanding. So the course of action that we'll take on that, and again, this is just for update in case anybody's wondering where we are with this, is we are going to continue to explore. We are going to continue to have that discussion, likely with a staff group next year, making sure that we've got all the right eyes on the problem, and then keep it in mind. And if it's something that at some point we do believe serves our students best, then that would be an option that we would bring forward to the board at that point.
So therefore, our calendar for the 1920 school year will not show use of e-learning days for snow days. Our plan is to make up any emergency cancellation that we have to have next school year. We would have to have a pretty rock-solid plan before mid-October to make a change mid-year, but I don't intend for that to be the outcome. This would be a 2021 change if it were to come to fruition. But at the rate we're going, it may snow in September, who knows?
Excuse me, we'll move ahead to 6.6, the Otis contract.
As I introduced, I'm going to have Dr. McCrindles come on up to the microphone. So just a little bit of background. If you recall, in our strategic plan measures last year, as we were moving towards a more personalized structure, one of the things that we called for in the strategic plan was a comprehensive needs assessment related to an integrated data management system. That was something that our department in curriculum worked closely with Dr. Buzinski on, looking at, when we say data management system, we're looking at our student information system. We're looking at our assessment platform. How do we warehouse data? Is everything connected and integrated? Because if we are going to personalize for students, we need ways to communicate amongst teachers, between teachers and parents, making sure that that data is easily available and usable for everybody. And what the, really the conclusion that we came to was that some of our systems are integrated, some of them are not. One system that was identified as perhaps not performing in a way that was going to bring us to the future was our assessment platform in our data warehousing system called SchoolNet. So I actually don't know when the district adopted SchoolNet. It was certainly there quite a few years prior to my arrival in the district, and we've been using it to varying degrees at different levels. High school teachers would put final exams. We do have some teachers across the district that use it quite a bit. And we've received a lot of feedback from them that it's, you know, perhaps not as user-friendly for them is what they would wish. The data warehousing function, well, the middle school level really didn't use much of it at all. The elementary level, it just wasn't in use. And this was a system we've been paying for for a number of years. So our contract was up this year. And Dr. McCrindle, in her role when she joined the district, was to pick up on where we left off with that needs assessment from our strategic plan last year and to really run with reviewing systems that would not only potentially replace SchoolNet. We did review SchoolNet again to see if perhaps it could meet our needs, but what system could potentially replace it and then move, move us forward into the future. It's always a little bit of a balancing act because in this type of discussion, we need to meet our current needs. So if we have teachers, classrooms, administrators that are relying on SchoolNet, even if it's imperfect, we can't yank it away without bringing something else forward to be able to meet those needs. But we also don't want to just meet our current needs. We want to make sure it continues to carry us forward and push us towards personalization. So with that, I'm going to let Dr. McCrindle talk a little bit about the process and the system, which is called Otis, that we are bringing forward for consideration of a contract for approval at the next board meeting.
Thank you. So we're excited to talk a little bit about Otis because of what Dr. Schlichter said and how we're confident that it's going to meet our needs where we are currently, but then also help us move forward in the future. So a little bit about how we went through this process. Dr. George actually started the process a couple of years ago, and so we continued it. And what we did was this fall, we met with a team of teachers, or it started with administrators, and we all looked at six different platforms. One of the platforms was our current platform, and then Otis was one of those six, and then additional ones that other school districts around Illinois and the nation utilize. They came in and presented to us, we took feedback. And based on the feedback we got from the administrative team, Otis rose to the top as being one of the options. So at that next step, what we did is we brought in a group of coaches and our RTI facilitators in our buildings, and also some department chairs, and then teachers to really review the Otis platform. And they received the presentation, and the feedback from them, you'll see in the board packet, was very positive to where they did feel like Otis could meet their current needs, but then also move forward where we're going in the future. We used that group to also start to look at how would we start to use Otis? Because what Otis does is it has so many different capabilities. It is a data warehouse system. It is an assessment platform. It has the ability for parent communication, so we could streamline some communication and lessen the number of apps that parents might be using, which is some feedback we've received from the elementary parents especially. It has the potential for student blogs, some of the capabilities from Power School Learning. HAIQU is our platform. It has a standards-based gradebook. It has student portfolios, blogs, it's all in here, you can take a look. And so because of that, because it has all these options, we want to make sure that we're not taking too much too soon. And so we were trying to be very thoughtful in what were our teachers ready for and how could it meet our needs? So our plans are, if approved, that we would utilize Otis starting next year in our elementary schools, really focusing on the parent communication aspect, saying that we won't be utilizing all these different apps. Right now, there are some parents that might have a kindergartner and a fourth grader, and two teachers might be using different apps for communication. That's confusing. And so we're going to try to eliminate that and really make it to where we can use Otis as that one platform. And the elementary schools would also be looking to use this for data-informed instruction. So they meet throughout the school year in data review meetings, looking at students and how they're doing on their assessments. And so this platform has a capability to pull all that together and let teachers be able to really see how a child is doing in one spot. And so we would be using that throughout the school year with our elementary teachers. We've also talked about possibly piloting the standards-based gradebook in our dual-language classrooms. Right now, our gradebook is difficult to report out in both languages to parents, and it's just not in a clean way. And so Otis has a capability to do this. So we thought we could possibly try that out with them. And then also in dual-language, they have talked about wanting to have student portfolios. And so we would start to kind of build that in with that system as well. We have been working with the middle school administrators, and we've discussed that their kind of on-ramps would be the common assessments. Otis can take an assessment, it can take that data, it will track it pre-K-12 for students so that all teachers can see how students are doing, and then also using the data warehouse piece. And then for high school, we've been working with Mr. Bealan and taking that same route of really focusing on using the platform for common assessments. So at the end of the different quarters or the finals at the different semesters, and then potentially using the student portfolios with Mr. Johnson with our Vanguard Vision students. So that would be our approach the first year. Now, Otis, as I said, does so many different things. Teachers could utilize it more or less, depending on how they're comfortable for, but we would want to really provide that professional learning for them in that area. So you can see our timeline that we have in there for how we would plan to work through this because we would want to make sure that teachers are trained on how to do this. So we would actually start this training this spring. We would do a train-the-trainer type of model where we'd bring, we're going to bring in a coach from each building, the RTI facilitator from each building because they really use the data currently, train them on the platform, and then they would develop a training for teachers and help support teachers in their buildings. We've been working with the high school specifically because they utilize SchoolNet the most right now, especially with assessments. So Mr. Bealan has been working with us, and we're going to get some super-users at the high school to get trained, to be a part of the training for Otis as well. And we're going to work to create the assessments that are currently in SchoolNet for teachers. If they need to be recreated, we're going to do that work for them so that they're not having to create them themselves moving forward, and then until they're able to kind of be trained on that and do it themselves. So you can see our financial costs we have in here. We have the option of a one-year contract or a two-year contract. There are significant savings with the two-year contract. If you pay upfront, and you can read kind of what it includes in there. We are recommending the two-year contract for this for multiple reasons, one of which is the savings, but also because it will give us, you know, two years really gets to know the system, and we feel confident that it would be successful. You can see where we're finding the money for that in the packet as well. We're able to kind of use some of the other funds where SchoolNet, you can see, was a $34,000 line item along with some other platforms that we've been using in the district to use that money to cover the cost. That's the end of what I have. So any questions?
Prior to any questions, I just wanted to add something that Otis will do for us and go step two, maybe two or three steps down the road. You know, as we, as we're on this journey towards personalization, one of the greatest assets to a classroom to be truly personalized is the teacher's agility to respond to student learning in the moment. And that's called that formative assessment. To take that assessment in the classroom, alter what they're doing, and have that quantitative feedback of how are students responding to my instruction or to the material that they're learning, and let me alter so they can absorb it and learn it faster to move forward and not fall behind. Otis will have that, I guess the market doesn't really bear a, an online platform that gives that immediate feedback to teachers to respond. We're not there yet. It'll be a couple of steps down the road, but Otis has that capability. So this isn't just a short-sighted move for us. This is one that has three and four and five steps. And that's a huge one in our, in our path to personalization to allow our teachers to be as agile in the classroom as they need to be to respond to students more immediately. That's one that I'm most excited about, that capability. But again, that's a couple of steps down the road.
And to connect on that, one feature with Otis is you can integrate Google Docs through the system. And so a teacher could have a Google Doc right in front of them, the rubric, and they can give specific feedback, record their voice, have students record their voice on it, and then it will track and follow with them so you can see the growth throughout the process. So with those formative assessments, as we start to utilize it, we'll be able to incorporate them in that way.
And I have to give a quick shout-out to my elementary superintendent advisory group for bringing the multiple-app conversation to the table that allowed us to bring that to the forefront. And fortunately, Otis meets that need for us, so that our parents only have one form of communication, so it'll be email or Otis for formal communication from the classroom, which is a big win, I think, for our families.
My quick question is with the Vanguard program. You said that this will integrate with Vanguard?
There, we're potentially going-
Because they have a different, don't they have a different platform?
They do. So Otis has a student portfolio piece that we've talked about possibly trying with Vanguard Vision students. It might not work, it might work, but right now, you know, they don't have something in place that would really help support that. And we want to see that for the competencies and to be able to score them and see the growth. So we're hoping it would work, but that's a potential. So we're hoping it would work, but that's a potential. We would definitely weigh it out and make sure it's going to be successful before.
Ms. Melinda, would they share with you in your visit, though, about the learning management system need that they have? This doesn't serve that purpose. They're still investigating options for that day-in, day-out interaction.
Okay, that's kind of what I was trying to get at with this fix, that problem.
They both can contribute, but it's a little bit different than what they were referring to.
Okay. That's what I, thank you. Yes, that's what I was trying to get, got it.
From a technical side, is this web-based or is this, what does this do for our infrastructure?
Really, really no impact. It is entirely web-based.
It is web-based.
Yeah, it is. There's some functionality of it that's very much device-driven for teachers, but that's more just an add-on to the web functionality that exists. It's nothing that needs to be installed or anything like that. We don't really anticipate any real change in bandwidth utilization or anything like that, because it's really a replacement for systems that are already in place.
So is this, is this going to be, I guess it's a hot swap type of situation where you go live with this and you disable the other system, or is there a overlap period? Because there's going to have to be some kind of training on this and-
Yeah, so there's actually some good period of overlap. Some of the most overlap, we're actually working through with elementary right now to work with our elementary teachers on how to transition their content from one system to a different version of the same system while also coming onboard with Otis, so they can retain their existing content and still move forward with the new system at the same time. So there's definitely overlap there. It's not like we just pull the plug on one system and have the other one up running right away.
Okay.
We've got a lot of flexibility.
And you don't anticipate that that's going to be problematic to roll over the content to the new platform?
No, I don't really think so.
Okay. Other questions? Thank you.
All right, thank you.
All right, we'll move that one forward to the board as well. Item 6 dot 7, international travel, Peru.
So another exciting international travel opportunity for our students is coming forward, and is, as you recall, these are approved, these are for approval by the board, whereas the travel within the United States on the prior list was just an information item. So this was planned. It was on our long-term, five-year plan that was submitted by the high school and that we shared with the board in prior meetings over the years. So with that, you have the packet. It's a very, very standard setup, just a really, really great trip to Peru, Machu Picchu, a great experience for our students. So with that, we'll take any questions that you have. Mr. Anie is here, if anybody has anything specific, and take some questions.
Is your passport up for renewal yet? Okay, any questions from the board? All right, like the others, we'll move that one forward for general board approval. And 6 dot 8, wellness.
So as you know, part of state code is that we have to have a wellness committee review our wellness policy on an annual basis. All of our components are in compliance. However, as a district, we do go a little bit deeper into that, looking at not only are we meeting compliance in the various areas of the policy, but then to look at how can we enhance school wellness across the board for the district. So this year, we looked at areas of food service, curriculum instruction, health services, social-emotional learning, and then in the area of human resources, just employee wellness overall. So our committee took a look at each of those areas. We talked about some of the updates that are going to be needed for the 1920 school year, and then talked about was there other areas that we wanted to go over and above and go a little bit deeper in. So I just wanted to highlight just a few of those things. In the area of food service, we are looking to expand the tower gardens at the middle school. Mr. Harris has, had worked with the cafeteria as well as the special education department at the high school, and that's going extremely well. And we would love to see that replicated down at the middle school level as well. And so we have some ideas and some things there, so are super appreciative of the work that food service has provided, and then for our schools to really provide that opportunity for our students. In curriculum instruction, we've got a couple little things we have to look at, bicycle safety education and where that falls in into place, but they are going to embed that where it fits best for our K-5 students. Health services, just a main area, just a small new component is the dental examination that was previously required in K-2nd and 6th is now also required for our entering ninth graders. So we are making sure that all parents have that information. Next month, I won't go into too much detail, because next month, the curriculum department will be going into more of a full review on the SEL review that we have been doing. But we spent a lot of time in the wellness committee talking about that area of social-emotional learning and what are things that we're currently doing, where can we go a little bit farther? And I know that the curriculum department and that committee have been working very, very diligently on that. But did want to highlight that one component is that our two behavioral specialists in the district are going to go through a 40-hour mental health awareness training, a pretty in-depth training. They will then be able to be trainers and will come back and share that with pertinent staff in each of our buildings. And so it's really able to better identify some of those mental health signs that maybe go unseen, more internalization and things like that, but then being able to better train and then support students in that area for their. And then we looked at staff wellness, and we do the health screenings. We'll continue to do that. We have the EAP services for our staff. We wanted to look at what are the, what other ways can we maybe increase staff wellness? And so we talked about some mindfulness activities and workshops. Were there any partnerships with Northwestern-Sentegra that maybe we could do onsite partnering, whether they be with physical fitness-type activities or other wellness, nutrition that we could bring onsite for our staff? We used to do some fitness and wellness challenges at the buildings. I know the high school is extremely competitive in the ones that they had done there, but what other ways can we bring that back to the forefront? And what is it that our staff is looking at? But I think sometimes when you can bring those healthy lifestyles right to the workplace, it's easier for people to take advantage of for those, and what partnerships can we do with our community there to help out our staff? And outside of that, one of the key things that we looked at for all of these areas is we do a great job on meeting a lot of the expectations, the things that are in the code and in the policy. But how do we get that information to parents? Because we know if we partner in these various areas with, whether it's health services, social-emotional, whatnot, that we know that we can just be stronger at impacting the students. And so we have Parent University. It's part of the strategic plan, and we talked about some of the different topics that maybe we could roll out there. Some things that the committee talked about were balance and stress management. There's a lot that we ask of our students today at all levels, and how do they balance outside needs that are being met, whether they're sports or other academic kinds of things that they do outside of school along with school? We see more anxiety and things like that for our students. How can we support parents there? Vaping and substance abuse, and actually, I believe secondary, it's May 6th, we actually do have that going on. Mr. Venetico had worked very closely with some agencies in the community and partnered with that. And so, do you know how many parents we have signed up so far-ish?
Yeah, we've had some more roll in. We're probably up to about 100 right now.
And a very important parent topic out there, and so pretty excited. And that was opened up to parents in the entire district, different things with social media. And so we'd like to try to embed those, because again, the more we can partner with the home, the better that we will be able to meet the needs of our students. And we know that wellness, both physical and mental wellness of our kids, once that's really solid, they're able to learn, and we will see continued academic growth there. And so, again, as a component, you kind of have to do is the policy review, but that committee really, was really enjoyable to sit there and be part of that for the first time this year, because they really do look at the wellness and the whole child, and how can we really make a difference for our kids? So nothing we have to take action on. I don't know if you have any questions or recommendations, but that was the update.
Any questions from the board, comments? I think we're good. Thank you very much. Finance committee?
Finance. 7 dot 1, we have our purchase orders and press checks, disbursements. Any questions? Mr. Fluck, it's just you and me today. No questions, no concerns. We'll move those forward to the board for approval. 7 dot 2, revenue and expenditures report, Mr. Altmeier.
Thank you very much. You have the March 31st executive, third quarter ending executive summary in front of you. The district is continuing to track within budget. Now, if you just look at the March 2019 executive summary, you'll see that we're currently showing a $3.8, $3.9 million surplus, but you'll also notice that we still have a significant amount of capital outlay that we are going to incur by year-end with a lot of the projects coming down the pipeline. For your review, as I discussed at the last meeting, you do have a Forecast 5 Trended Analysis showing where we think we're going to end up, which is very close to budget, actually, close to break even. So you do have that on the last page or the third or fourth page of your document in front of you, and it's called the Aggregate Financial Forecast. There's a few variances there that you'll see on the revenue side, primarily driven on state and categorical revenues coming in less than what was initially budgeted at year-end. There's also a shortfall on the federal revenue side, but that's, we see that every year, and that's usually the idea grant driving the majority of that. So other than that, we continue to track very close to budget on salaries and benefits, primarily health insurance. And the capital projects will determine, you know, based on when those projects get started and launched and what we get completed by year-end as to where we end up. There is a, there is a chance that some of those projects may be put into this year's budget based on the timing, and we may end up a little, you know, in a deficit situation. But again, that will be simply because of when those capital projects were put into the pipeline, and we will work with the auditor and certainly next year's budget to kind of square that away and reflect that favorability next year. So stay tuned on that. We'll continue to update this as we move forward. I'd be happy to answer any questions you may have.
I have no questions. Okay. Any other questions? Anybody else? Move to 7 dot 3, fiscal reports.
The only thing to note within the fiscal memo, we did receive word back from Springfield legislator that they legislators, that they did approve our statement of annual affairs waiver, a three-year waiver, so good news there. So we will not be seeing that resolution and that waiver come through the next couple of years, but we will be doing that every third year, so that's already in my calendar to make sure we do that. Who knows, by that time, there'll probably be a law passed that we no longer have to do this, so let's cross our fingers. One, two other things I do want to point out, propane buses. So during the month, we met with Central State's Bus Sales and Roush Clean Tech in an effort to really understand what are the advantages of using propane buses versus our diesel buses today. There is an additional cost to that bus, only $7,000 to $8,000, but based on the price of propane versus diesel and based on the fact that the maintenance on those vehicles, those buses, excuse me, is extremely less than what we would maintain on a diesel bus, the break even is just a few years out.
Really?
And obviously, with us going green with solar, this would be the next step that we can take as a district to continue to move in that direction and save money as well in the long term. So we are continuing to look at this. There are some neighboring districts that Schaumburg, for instance, I think, has 30 buses or will have 30 propane buses in their fleet. I know Rockford still has some propane buses in their fleet. You know, and it used to be years ago, you know, a lot of districts that went propane were having issues, but a lot of those issues have really been overcome with the Roush Clean Tech engine that is actually manufactured by Ford, and it's a Ford engine. And so Ford works with Roush Clean Tech and works with Central State, or excuse me, Bluebird, and they've got a pretty good product. So when I was out in Pennsylvania last month, there were numerous districts out there with 80 to 110 propane buses in their fleet, and they've been doing them for the last five years and love them.
I mean, you see propane buses a lot in the national parks. It's all they use there. And then you see a lot of garbage trucks use propane.
Yeah.
They might. So my only, I don't know a lot about it, but is there a difference in how they perform the more, greater the distance they go versus that be better or worse?
That's a great question, and I don't have that answer currently. I do know certainly from, you know, and Mr. Rancosik pointed out, you know, these are buses that we don't have to plug in overnight, so when it's 40 below out, they start right up. Yeah. So a little different than diesel fuel kind of gelling and, you know, we're not going to have to, from an electricity standpoint, plug in the heaters, you know, on a 15, 20-degree below zero type of day. So they're pretty darn reliable, so. So we're continuing to look into that. Obviously, it was just this time last month, we did a bus bid. So the next time we do a bus bid, and I will keep the board apprised well before then, but, you know, I am hoping that we can do a bus bid moving forward with propane. I think the biggest challenge we will have is filling these, right? How much will wet hosing be for a propane bus? Can't we find somebody to come out and actually do wet hosing on a propane bus? And/or do we have to put a pad down and build an infrastructure with an onsite tank? So that's something we would have to take into account as well. So stay tuned on that. Also during the month, Adam Zera and myself, Mr. Zera and myself, met with representatives from Gallagher Basset to continue to look into pharmacy health savings. So if you remember years ago, we tried to look at, look at our RX and see if there are savings to be had there. RX, as you know, we have $9 to $10 million a year in claims, and 40, 45% of those claims are RX. And so Gallagher Basset has a kind of, an arm that they work with, a benefit group that they work with that has significant experience on the pharmacy RX side, and they have great experience working with Blue Cross Blue Shield and other PBMs to negotiate better rebates, better discounts that they can bake into our plan. And so we're hoping that they can come back and show us how to receive an additional 10 to maybe even 25% savings on our current RX spend, and that would work side-by-side, you know, with our current broker. So very independent of that, but just wanted to let the board know that we're continuing to turn over every stone and look for opportunities to save where we can. So Adam and I are kind of all over that and looking forward to seeing something from Gallagher here in the next few weeks. Other than that, preparing for the annual audit, wrapping up year-end. Two weeks, I'll present another draft of the budget. So get excited for that. There's not a lot of changes coming through, but there will be changes, and we'll outline that. We'll also share with the board what is the worst-case scenario under our five-year plan. So it'll be pretty bad.
Yeah, I get it. All right.
So that's it. That's all I have. Any questions?
Any questions, anybody? Questions there? Nope.
Okay.
Nothing further there. Just like, any question on the activity fund report? No questions there. So move to 7 dot 4, and we have one revenue contract for Art, I believe. Some of the best handwriting I've ever seen, request. So, yes, that was my point. Okay, you got it. All right. Yeah, so any questions, concerns about that fundraiser?
Every year, we do this, right?
Yep. We'll move that forward to the board. Finance is done on 2 HR. I'm going to let you run it.
All right, me and you. Okay. Eight dot one, monthly human services, resources, sorry, updates. Mr. Zare.
So, just a quick update from HR. Still onboarding individuals for next year, so at the May board meeting, we should have a pretty lengthy personnel report as we bring on some new staff. Internally, over the next week, we'll be meeting with teachers, principals will be meeting with teachers to solidify the involuntary, involuntary transfer process as we had to shift a few teachers across the district based on section sizes. So, very excited as we are in high time for hiring season. We have gotten a lot of it done. I'm very happy where we're at, considering we're just getting into May.
Okay. Thank you. Any questions? Any question? Okay, we'll move that forward. Eight dot two, client service agreement.
This is a client service agreement that I'd like to recommend the committee move forward to the next board meeting for approval. This is our current broker, Alliant Mesro. We are essentially just extending this service with the option to go through twenty twenty-two, but we can annually look at this, which Mark and I are going to do as this time comes around next year to make sure this is the right fit for us. The annual rate does not change, it's sixty-six thousand dollars as it has been the past three years. We're finishing up our third year with Alliant Mesro.
Okay. Thank you. Questions? Okay, we'll move that forward, and I will turn it over to myself again for communications, community engagement. Nine dot one, delayed start proposal. Dr. Rowe.
All right. Mr. Armstrong's trying to get my very short, two-slide presentation up. This winter was, was a doozy for us. We missed four days of school, two for cold days and two due to snow, but the snow was really at arriving at an opportune time. And I believe both days, as well as, as a third, we would have probably called for a delayed start had we had a schedule built in to our system. You know, District three hundred, our neighbor uses a delayed start, and they called a number of them this year. And I'd like to just bring the conversation to the board for discussion. I'm not asking for a decision this month, but to kind of get a pulse of where you're at on the topic and show you the, a schedule that Laura Hooper and Jessica Lombard have built for us, just to visualize what a delayed start for inclement weather would, would mean. So, Dan, if you progress through the first slide, it shows you what our current reality is. Our school bus drivers currently report between six and six-thirty each morning, and then from the high school down to all the elementary schools, it shows their, their goal arrival time, and, and they're, they're pretty, you know, they're obviously pretty accurate as to when they do arrive, but give and, give and take a few minutes there and then when those school, schools start. Now, this winter may have been unique, but a number of the, the storms that, that we actually ended up calling the school day on, by ten AM, the roads were fairly passable. By the time we started school, just for good measure, most all the roads, except for the state-controlled Route forty-seven, was almost beautiful, but we don't get to control Route forty-seven. The Department of Transportation does that. But if you go to the next slide, if we were to institute a delayed start, we would literally just push everything back by two hours. So, our delivery times, the bus drivers would have a little bit more time for the roads to clear for their safe travel into the buildings, and then our school day would start just two hours later. Everything else would remain exactly the same in terms of dismissal. We would likely cancel session one of preschool, but at current reality, our preschools is as a Monday through Thursday attendance anyway, so Ms. Powell would be able to reschedule session one on one of her parent ed Fridays if, if she chose. You could handle the school schedule in a number of different ways. Middle school and high school would likely operate on a condensed schedule and shorten their each class period to, so that everything happened as usual, just in a shorter timeframe. Elementary could, could do things however, you know, they chose in terms of just starting the day at that time and continuing on, or condensing everything and still having all the, the specials meet for a shorter time period. So, so with that, I'm, I'm curious as to, to your feedback and, and opinion on this topic. There's a lot of different ways that we can go based on, on your impression.
Okay. Questions?
Yeah. My first blush at this is, yeah, I like that. That sounds great, but if you applied this for the last four days that you described, you know, hindsight's easy to say, oh, yeah, the roads were fine at ten o'clock, but you don't know if the roads are going to be fine at ten o'clock when you maybe choose to do a delayed start. Would you have been able to implement any of the delayed starts for those four days and made it work?
I think that we, I think we would have been able to this year because the, the storms were, if I remember correctly, Doug is usually my, my four-thirty AM phone partner, and they were due to end at about seven-thirty. So, travel into the building, the roads were, were decent, but not great. They were passable, we, we, we made it work, but if a storm is, is set to end at about seven-thirty and we have a couple of hours for this, for the village to respond, that would be a good opportunity to use one of these. It would not be every time it snows, we would just do a delayed start. We would still use the exact, the same amount of, of care and, and in terms of calling a delayed start versus canceling the whole day. The purpose for bringing this is to give potentially an option to not have another day to make up and to still allow our students to come to school for that.
Second question. Do all three of our municipalities seem to respond pretty equally in getting their roads cleared, or is one town better than? I mean, you don't have ten towns, but, like, you know, it's, I mean, if we, if we have one town that does a really good job and the other town is, is not, I mean, we're in three, you know, three villages, so how, any concerns over that?
Well, based on my travels this winter, I would say the further west we go, the more challenging it is because of the, the open space. And if you go out, usually I start and head out to the high school first, and Main Street is always the, the biggest challenge because of the, how wide open it is. And then if you go out west of the high school, and actually on Seaman Road is usually one of, one of my, my paths because that, a tiny little road, we have a lot of students that come from that area. So, that's usually the, the biggest challenge. By the time I get back across on the other side of forty-seven, it's four forty-five, and Huntley's done a good job, and Algonquin and Reed look pretty good. By the time I get to Lake in the Hills in Algonquin, Mr. Rancosik's already been there, so he sees them a little earlier, but they're tend to be in better shape. But the further west you go, the, the more challenging it is.
Right, and so we also have Coin Station Road, which is the main, one of the main arteries to get into our high school, one of, only two arteries really, or three, and our high school students travel that a lot, and that's a concern because that's a township road, and it's not always plowed as well as the other roads too. So, our big issues are probably forty-seven and Coin Station, and if we do the delayed start, there's a much better chance that those entities will have a chance to get those properly plowed versus trying to have new drivers on the road and buses on those roads that aren't, aren't quite as safe. It gives, it gives them a chance to get that plowed. Any other questions? Comments?
Yeah, my, my concern actually goes out even further than that because we extend out into Union and up north towards one seventy-six, and so that, it's the same component there, but because of the reach into some of those other rural areas, that, that's where my concern would lie. The other part is what does the school day become then for, for kids when you compress it by two hours? What is, what does a period look like for, for the high school, and is it still productive enough for those kids to be there on a shortened schedule?
That's a valid question. The high school class periods are forty-seven minutes currently. They would, they would condense to between twenty-five and thirty, I would, I would say, in order to give an adequate time for still lunch and passing period. It's, it's doable. It's not perfect, but that's, it's a valid point. And I bring this forward not as a goal to do this every time. We have the potential to call snow later, just to add a tool for the toolbox.
Sure.
But it's, that's a valid, that's a valid concern.
Yeah, I, I always worry about why, why we get so caught up in avoiding missing a day and not pushing it off and just letting things be normal, have a normal school day. The school calendar extends one, one extra day, and everybody's so rigid that school going an extra day or two is, is a big problem. I mean, I, I just wonder why we work so hard to try not to, to avoid, you know, be done with everything.
Yeah, what's, what's the fiscal cost to, to have, to have a day on the back end of the school year? Is that really changed to keep those buildings open another day, or? Is there, is there any, there's really no?
Financial.
There's not a financial component to this.
Well, there's probably, there's some probably small financial component.
We have, we have, you know, the day after students stop, we still have employees come in, our secretaries, our, our ten-month staff, or our eleven-month staff still come for ten or eleven days beyond the students. So, nearly every aspect of the buildings are all still fully functioning. It's, it's, it's a hundred percent about, you know, about safety and it, but it's just, it's, when you get to nine-thirty or ten AM and everything's clear, it's, you just kind of, we could have done this, but at seven-thirty, it wasn't safe. But I, you know, I understand your point.
Well, and then, so then the, the discussion is the cost to our parents and families that have to take a day off work or whatever, maybe they can go, I, I could see that side of it too, is.
Component.
Well, let me add that during our parent advisory meetings, when we talk to our parents about this, they did like the idea versus a snow day and tacking it on to the end of the school year. Any other comments? Tony or Stone?
Yeah, I'm, I'm just pondering because it's so inconveniences them versus provide a quality day of education for their children. I mean, who are they thinking about themselves or their kids? That's, that's what I'm contemplating.
Also, some, some of it is practical too. I mean, it's, it's, you know, it's very hard to get, if you have to go into work that day, to have last minute people watching your children and stuff, it's, you know, it's.
Right, I think that was part of it.
There's a lot, there's a lot of different ways that this can look for people. So, I, I mean, I like the idea, and I think, I think we should give it a shot and see how it goes. I mean, you know, if we got problems, we can, we can address.
Right. I mean, it's easier, I think, I think as a parent's point of view, it's easier to delay your work day versus having to take a whole day off. We don't have to make, I mean, it's still, it's just a proposal discussion, so we can think about it.
And I could, we could even take it to a different level and ask the community what they, what they think. If you'd be interested in something like that, we could put something out to ask their parents directly if.
Yeah.
What their preference may be.
I think that's a great idea. Mm-hmm.
All right. Mr. Armstrong, let's.
So, maybe like a, yeah.
Let's, we'll put something together and get that out to them, and then I'll bring that feedback back to you.
Okay.
Yeah.
What time is it?
On you. Um, you, would you make the call then at five AM?
Yes, our, our goal is always by, by five or five fifteen at the very latest, so people have the opportunity to just scramble and make arrangements as much time as possible.
Okay, and then once?
And that wouldn't change for a delayed start or a complete call-off.
Okay, and so then, if the call is made for a delayed site start, that it's, are you locked into that then? So, let's say the weatherman gets it wrong, and that storm system lingers and it continues to dump, and now we've made a commitment for a delayed start, and it's not going to happen. So, then what happens?
Well, that's, well, that's the risk and the decision, and that's why it's, it's such a difficult decision every single time. It's, it's belabored, and we would err on the side of caution, honestly. If the storm's not going to end, and, and, and Mr. Rancosik's models and the models that I'm paying attention to, it's not set to end, and all signs point to, this will be work from our communication with in-house to my conversations with Mr. Johnson, the village manager, to our road commissioners, and we're not all in agreement about when the storm's going to end, then we probably just call it a day. It's not worth the risk. We would err on the side of caution for sure.
Okay. Any other questions?
We'll get that information and, and come back.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Nine dot two, the Hart resolution.
All right. This is one that, that I'm actually really, really excited about. The, the Hart Committee is the Huntley Area Administrative Roundtable. It came into existence in nineteen ninety, ninety, started by Carl Tomaso. You know, the only founding member that still sits on the committee is, is Tom Palmer with the Park District, and it consists of, of those community boards, the Huntley Chamber, the Huntley Village, the Library, the Park District, Police, Fire, and ourselves. And it started as a, as a group that, that met quarterly to just sit around the table, maybe have lunch or coffee, and talk about what we're experiencing in our districts to stay connected to other community leaders. What challenges do we face, are there opportunities for collaboration or are brainstorming through problems? And, and this fall, I, you know, exciting for, for me to come and join this group at this, at this time is, you know, Dave Johnson, as we and I began talking about, you know, what, what does the future of Huntley look like, and how can this group and all of our entities really contribute to extending our, our leadership and to, you know, foreseeing where Huntley is going and creating something really unique? And out of that came, came the idea of unifying our groups a little bit more. We changed our meeting structure to, to stop meeting just quarterly, and we've been meeting monthly all year, and we've really been, as we, as we began talking how we can better collaborate for the benefit of our community, it really became clear that we needed something, something a little bit more unifying to show the community and really show the potential future economic partners that would come in and choose Huntley as their, as their destination for their business, that they're entering a very unique community where all of the government entities are aligned in our philosophy as to how we serve and serve our community. So, Dan, if you go to the next, the next page, through, through our conversations, we really, really settled on a unified mission statement, and we didn't go through the normal process, but this really just came through our, our conversations of building a strong foundation for our citizens and families, focus on service and safety. Our leadership group would collaboratively strive to align and lead the community's pursuit of excellence through shared vision for future-oriented planning, innovation, and fiscal responsibility in order to enhance the quality of life for our community, one that we all share. You know, and the tagline of, of, you know, Huntley, high standards, even higher expectations, and Dave came up with that, and it, it really fits what we're all, we're all really working towards. And the ultimate goal that, that we would be adopting, you know, if, if we choose to, if you choose to adopt this resolution down the next page, highlights seven goals that we would share, and none of these goals deviate from anything that we don't already hold in high regard, but that we all maintain a fiscal responsibility with our residents in mind while continuing to provide high-quality services, that we maintain a sharp focus on safety for all of our citizens in every aspect of life in Huntley, we maintain a family-focused approach in current practices and future initiatives, collectively seek partnerships with one another and outside of our group to, to benefit all of our organizations and therefore the community, collectively seek economic opportunities to retain, attract businesses for continued community growth, maintain a commitment for an inclusive community environment for all of our citizens, and then finally maintain open communications amongst other Hart members to ensure continued alignment in our values while recognizing the autonomy of each organization. And how we envision the adoption of a resolution of this nature benefiting our community may lie more with the village than with any other particular entity is if you're a business that are looking for a place to land and call home, why would you, I can't imagine shying away from a community where all of the service organizations and the, and the community leaders are aligned in our philosophy, not only with, with word, but with public act. In January, we presented this concept at a, at a dinner meeting, all of the administrators, as well as, you know, Mike was there and the respective board presidents and the mayor, and they, they agreed at that meeting that this was the concept that we should continue to pursue, and we, we tossed ideas around of, of, you know, seven different organizations in a joint board meeting and thought that may be a little too difficult to arrange schedules to, to accomplish, and settled on our. and settled on a, a formal resolution, all adopting that we agree to adhere as best we can to these goals. Um, but the beauty is, is that none of the goals deviate from anything that any of these organizations already stand for. It just shows our community, uh, that we're aligned and, and leading with their best interest at heart. Um, so with that, I, I highly recommend that, that we adopt this resolution, um, as all other of the seven, six other entities would be doing in May, um, kind of formalizing our partnership.
Okay, thank you. Any questions or comments? Okay, then we'll move that forward to the regular board meeting and on to building and grounds, Mr. Troy.
Full committee on this side. Um, O and M updates, uh, Mr. Van Costick, ten dot one.
Um, solar project update for the board. Um, the, uh, Mark Altmer, you wanna talk about the IPA dialogue?
Um, sure, you want me to talk about it for you? Sure. I'll take the mic, I like the mic. Just kidding. Um, so we did have a chance to reach out to IPA and see exactly where, uh, where are our applications, right? We have three, uh, three campuses, we have three applications in the pipeline, um, with the IPA. And the process is, um, you know, we were hoping all to hear final, final communication that we're good to go, right? Um, and we've, we've been waiting. So, uh, the process is, so everybody understands it, is that we've submitted these applications, um, to the IPA and because there was no lottery, you know, the, the assumption is, or these projects will be moving forward, but we still want the stamp that says absolutely, it's been approved, we're good to go. So the process at the IPA is, uh, they're assigned, our applications are actually assigned to somebody to review them. They're actually reviewed and so on their website, it actually notes, has your application been assigned? Has it been reviewed? Has it been verified? Has somebody looked at it, validated everything on it, gotten all the questions answered that they need answered? And then ultimately, when it's verified, it's in a queue to go to the ICC for approval and they meet twice a month. Um, and once approved by them, it's sent over to the utility, ComEd, and then the ComEd, utility has seven days to then approve it from there. So of the three applications we have, we have one that has been verified, so it's in the queue to go to the ICC. Um, I learned today, uh, from talking to Rachel McGlothlin, our VP of Sales at Forefront Power, that she learned that the two other applications that we have are, well, the last two applications within the block that have yet to be reviewed and/or verified. Um, so that being said, they have committed, the IPA has committed that within the next week or so, those should be reviewed and verified and then subsequently put into the queue for ICC. We're hoping they get into the queue at the same time the Reed Road campus, uh, application gets in the queue so that they can all essentially go to the utility, uh, ComEd together for, for approval within seven days. So we, we could theoretically still be two or three weeks out from hearing final word that we're moving forward, which the assumption is, and if you talk to Forefront Power, they're ninety-nine point nine percent, we're, we're moving forward. It, it's, it's a go, but, you know, we still wanna see the, the, the seal of approval from the IPA, the ICC and ComEd. So stay tuned on that, but that's exactly kinda where we are in the process.
Thank you, Mark.
I, I got a question on that, 'cause I find it interesting that a couple of weeks ago, the Herald, uh, had put out that, you know, they, the, the lotteries for the categories that had to have a lottery, uh, were announced. And I thought, gee, if we didn't, if we weren't in a, if we were in a category that didn't need a lottery, that we would go ahead of those. And I don't know why they did it this way, but, um, it makes no sense to me.
Yeah, I, I think the assumption was because there were so many applications into the pipeline for the lottery, five hundred plus applications per block, that they needed to get through. Once the lottery happened, they wanted to commit and confirm to the lottery winners that they're a go. So that's how they ended up being in the queue ahead of, uh, our block, um, from being reviewed and assigned and verified, so.
Um, yeah, you know, I, that raises two, two concerns. Um, if, and it doesn't apply to the school district because we're not in the lottery, but do you think, um, that the, those that were in the lottery, does that mean they're in, they've already been reviewed? Or they just got into the lottery?
It, it's, it's my understanding that those that were in the lottery were reviewed and verified.
Okay, so then.
And they're now working on our block.
So we sorta got, in a way, pushed to the side because they, they didn't have to?
Because they needed to get through the lottery process.
All right, so that, I, I was, I was reading into it way too much, like there's a problem with our application.
Yeah.
Okay, thanks.
And I also wanted to note that I had a conversation today with our forefront partner that, um, on the net zero metering, which is my other big concern, um, that they've had informal conversations with ComEd and, uh, we could choose to buy the, uh, balance of the electricity that we will consume from ComEd. They would support that as a net zero metering environment informally. Or we could choose to go to our retail electric supplier. Our present retail electric supplier is Constellation. And we met another school district representative from a southern suburb who's just had their Constellation retail electric supplier model approved for net zero metering. So, uh, we just have received information today from, um, a consultant that works with Forefront, uh, purpo- uh, look, analyzing the difference in retrospect over the last twelve months. If we would've been in a model where we were buying that balance of electricity from ComEd based on consumption we had in those period and average price, uh, the, spot interval pricing, um, where would we have been? So we've gotta digest and analyze that and be comfortable. Uh, it looks like there's a potential swing of some, some dollars there that's recognizable. Um, so we, we've gotta do a little homework. We have a little time yet to do that. Um, so, more to come. Summer project planning is going on, uh, escalating right now. Um, no, no details to report on that, but, uh, we're ready to go as soon as, uh, the facilities become available to start, uh, renovation. Uh, the last thing I'd like to talk about on the O and M updates is our strategic energy management program, efficiency program participation. We're very excited about the opportunity that's been presented to us. Uh, NICOR and ComEd are working together, uh, and have been invited, twelve, eight to twelve school districts to participate in a program uh, where basically they have a consultant that would come out and work with the school districts for a comprehensive energy management program that focuses on helping integrating energy management best practices in the district and is structured to help, uh, the district lower its operating costs at low to no cost, uh, projects and behavioral changes. Um, this is a year-long program. We have coaches from their team. Uh, there are, uh, there's a calendar, uh, on what, what, uh, what the meeting schedule is where we'd be invited to participate in meetings with other school districts. Um, they, they provide one-on-one coaching, engineering support for analysis of return on investments for particularly creative ideas that they find and throw on the table after doing a, what they call an energy scan of our buildings. Uh, we get to participate in group workshops and trainings, um, and, uh, they'll help us with building performance tracking. And we get incentives for, uh, what outcomes of energy conservation. I take note on page thirteen, uh, I'm sorry, page three is, of the, uh, O and M updates is a, is a copy of a charter that, uh, we would be looking to execute unless the board has any concern, uh, that just puts on record that, that we're developing a team that is going to, uh, it's gonna develop a model where we have continual meetings, uh, with it, like an energy team at the district. We're already doing things, something, some of these things, um, but it's going to force us to preserve them into meeting minutes, uh, and things like that. Um, if you go to page thirteen, it talks about a calendar where the support of our partner and how it's provided over the year and it gives us a lot of opportunities at no cost to us, uh, to develop a, a more onsite, uh, hands-on, uh, program to monitor and, and maybe enlist behavioral changes that would, uh, support further reductions in our energy consumption. Um, and if you go back one page to twelve, it talks about some of the incentive. They'll help us get the incentive dollars, uh, for, uh, projects that do reduce our energy consumption. And there are milestone bonuses, um, which, um, we get, we get, just, just for executing a charter, developing a team, doing a little news blast, we'll get a small check. And, uh, two other benchmark steps in the process, we'll get additional incentives to continue to, uh, get us to, uh, willing to, and interested in participation. This is, since we're at the point where we've done a lot of, uh, physical changes that can be done, um, that are what I call the low hanging fruit, to have a partner to do something like this is really a natural next step for us to continue on the road. So unless the board has any reservation on this program, we'd like to continue.
Any, any questions or comments from the committee or the board? Any reservations with, with that particular thing? Yeah, I think it's a good idea myself. Exactly. Okay. Uh, any, anything else from Mr. Van Costick as far as those updates? All right then, uh, moving ahead to ten dot two, construction update, please.
We're having meetings, uh, with Golden Lamp and the engineering team behind the old team and the civil engineering team. Um, and, uh, the high school administration has been participating as well and getting to a point where we can make sure that our expectations are met and, and some of the finer points of, uh, the project design. And, uh, no, no concern about budget that I've heard at this time. Um, I'm excited to provide you the schedule on page two there, talking about our timeline. The vision is to have documents prepared and go out to bid at the beginning of July, open the bids, uh, about three weeks later, present those bids to the board on August second with the hopes of awarding bids on August sixteenth so we can break ground. I did, uh, reiterate to our partner at Lamp, um, that it is our goal to have this addition completed and ready to occupy in the beginning of August of twenty. And at this point in time, they suggest to me that that's still a very realistic goal, so we're on our way.
Any questions on the construction update report? Seems pretty quiet. Okay, thank you for that update, Mr. Van Costick. Unless there, did I miss a question? All right, uh, ten dot three, ice melt bid, please.
We do this every year. We try to do it early in this, after the first, after the prior winter, uh, take inventory of our stock. We know that on the average, we consume sixty-four pallets of ice melt per year to maintain our sidewalks and paths through the campuses. And in fact, we consume sixty-four pallets this year. Uh, in the middle of the year, I was so fearful this was gonna be a terrible year that I actually spot bought some to get us by. Um, but, uh, here we are. Uh, we did manage to buy, uh, half our year's consumption. So, um, we, we went out to bid and, uh, we've got a new provider that's low bid. Uh, they're bidding the product that, uh, we're mostly used to working with, there's no reason not to recommend it.
Okay, any questions from the committee? Any questions from the board? Any objections with moving this forward then? Okay, no objections? All right, we'll move that forward. Excuse me, ten dot four, uh, remote system support agreement with CTS.
This is a service contract that we've had, uh, since the original performance contract with, uh, CTS Group expired. Um, it's a very reasonable cost for the substantial digital control systems that we have in this school district, with hundreds of thousands of control points that we manage, uh, that help us, uh, do our best to preserve the energy efficiency that we gain by the installation of that digital control system. And it's phone support and they also help us with, uh, upload of the data for Energy Star benchmarking, uh, which I know is a goal in state statute that we continue to benchmark our facility's energy conservation efforts. Um, and, uh, there's a modest increase for the recommended period, uh, ahead. I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Looks pretty straightforward to me. Um, any questions or concerns from the board? Any objections from the committee for moving this forward? All right, we'll go ahead and move that forward then. And ten dot five, uh, master agreement for engineering services.
Over the years, we've had our share of, uh, finding of leaks in our masonry building envelope. It's not uncommon, uh, for buildings, uh, and, uh, facilities of this size and scope to have ongoing maintenance programs for, um, masonry wall conditions. Uh, sometimes, uh, this industry is still a, uh, it's a learning industry. Uh, I, it, it's kinda sad to say it's taken as many years, but we do still find flaws in construction at certain points in time. Uh, but we also have ongoing preventive meetings that we need to do with sealants that fail after a certain life cycle and we have some window systems that could use some, we could use some help to determine what the real fix is and there are substantial recognizable increases. I mean, our improvement costs are, I wanna proceed cautiously and make sure we get it right. Um, and, uh, when we were back to our days of, uh, on near, um, court litigation on some flaws, uh, we partnered with, uh, two different forensic engineering firms to peer review designs to keep us ahead of, uh, the, uh, parties that we were filing complaints against for construction flaws. And we, we were steered to building technology consultants as the highest expert in the, in the, in the, in the group of the two there. And, um, we recognized that they had helped us and their, their, their members of their team helped us greatly in fixing those particular problems. And we've got a few challenging ones ahead. Uh, I do know that, uh, they were, uh, a little bit pricier than the other firm, um, but they did provide much better service uh, and higher quality assistance. I did talk to them at length about the fact that they were a little higher priced. Uh, they were willing to bring their prices down a little bit. This is a model for a master agreement, um, that I'm bringing to you for consideration where, uh, it just lays out the general terms and conditions. And as we've done with our architects agreement and our construction managers agreement, uh, of late, uh, we would then identify a task list and, uh, get particular estimates of cost for a particular scope of work and not have to worry about a contract any further 'cause it would already be in place. And I would ask that, that for some time and material services from them upfront to help me prioritize how to tackle some of the, the first round of these remedial measures that were identified in a building assessment that we had, uh, that I brought to the board some months ago. Do you have to answer any questions?
So this is a master agreement and then we'll come, they will come back with the final cost in order to do the work?
Yeah, we, there would be a little bit of time and material service such as other consultants that we do use for various things in our school district to help guide us to some models of some construction that we would put out to bid.
Okay.
And then we would get hard numbers from them for going through their assistance with the design development and, and what construction administration we might need assistance with.
Okay.
In some cases, I can manage some of that. It's field inspection that I've seen so many times, I, I can do it, um, if time permits. We just have to see how, we'll bring, you know, information like that back later.
Okay. Any questions from the committee or the board? Any objections with moving this forward then? Nope, okay, we'll go ahead and move that forward. Uh, Mr. Fleck, legislation committee.
Just approved in the Senate, it's still in the House. Right, so first they have to vote to put a question on the ballot to open up the Constitution. And then, at that point, there's, um, other legislation that would allow, uh, the tax rate to change, to a tax rate structure, which means there would not be a flat income, um, rate anymore.
And, and, and doesn't it, it takes more than just a majority vote?
Three fifths.
Yeah.
So. I'm sorry, I didn't have my, my gun here. Um, and there's a couple of proposals that are out there, so more to come on that if that, if that gets legs and moves forward. Um, I'm sure you will hear a lot about it because it is a very hot topic in the state. Um, and that's the details of those, those proposed rates, I think are incentive fills, six eighty-seven. And then six eighty-nine. the estate tax, which is, first of all, the Illinois estate tax is a very complicated calculation. It's not very clear like the federal estate tax, but I think they need to do that to get on board with what other states are doing. Tony, do you have any comments about your thoughts on that?
I don't have a lot of thoughts other than I don't think people realize that the estate exemption in Illinois is four million compared to around eleven million to federal, so.
Yeah.
Not that a lot of us have that problem, but it's, you can have a state problem obviously much sooner than a federal problem.
Yeah, and it's a much lower rate than the federal estate tax, but what they found on the federal level is before they jumped that up, let's say, two thousand eleven or so, two percent of all states were paying estate tax, and they were bringing in a certain amount of money. When they changed it to these much larger amounts, first five and a half million, now like eleven and a half million, and it's affordable for couples, could actually double that, only zero point two percent of the states are paying that, and they're still bringing in just about the same amount of revenue. So it's relief for a lot of people, a lot of families, and yet it doesn't really have the impact on tax revenue that a lot of people thought it would. I think they're thinking, Illinois has just got to get on board with that. So that's interesting. How that affects schools, I don't know if it's really going to change much in the terms of, you know, revenue available from the state. And then finally, the bigger topic, which just came out, I think, the last few days, and I might need Ms. Malendy's or Mr. Altmaier's help on this one, has to do with the very complicated issue of property tax extension limitation law, property tax freezes for certain districts, and what you need to do to qualify for that. Somebody can give me some details on that, I'd appreciate it.
So just very loosely, we believe what that means, I'm not sure it would affect our school district too much because you have to be at a certain adequacy level...
Full adequacy.
To be able, right, before that affects you, and we are not, so.
Okay. So...
But watch, well, we should watch it.
Yeah, you know, it's part of the very real concern about property tax, property tax relief, but it could affect some districts, they could be harmed by it, so. But more to come on that, that's still kind of, you're just making a splash. That's all I have, other than, do you have more news about your bill?
No, I did have a conversation with Representative Worley, who is very excited about the bill. Brought him completely up to speed, and so they're moving forward with, you know, to get that amended, the bill amended, because we did make some changes to that to make sure we were capturing all dollars. And so it was beneficial to Cook County as well as every taxing district in the state. So no, it's moving forward, and it's hopefully going to move forward swiftly, so I think we also receive, no, I think that's about it. That's the only update that we probably have to share at this time.
I hope that keeps going forward.
Yeah. No, I did not see that. You want to add that?
Oh, sorry.
No, okay.
Okay.
Enough for the whole class?
Okay, it is nice. I always wanted to say that. All right, that's it for legislation. Eleven point two, Board of Education. We've got minutes. Any questions, comments, concerns about the minutes as presented? If not, I have a full committee, so we can bring that forward for the consent agenda. And same, we'll also look at closed session minutes as well. So with that, we are done, except for making a motion at eight thirty-four to go into closed session for the items listed in the agenda. Second from Ms. Malendy, let's have a roll call.
Mr. Quagliano?
Yes.
Mr. Fleck?
Yes.
Mrs. Malendy?
Yeah.
Mr. Garin?
Yes.
Mr. Gentry?
Yes.
Mr. Troy?
Yes.
Miss, Mrs. Mariano, shy blind?
Okay. I think that motion passed, so we are now in closed session. Thank you.